So it is five ten, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Let me bring up the agenda really quick. Okay, so let's see, Janie, are you taking notes or who's?
I am.
Okay, so it looks like we've got, yeah, Bonnie, Janie and Kathy from the board. Matt Zaudy was not able to be here tonight. Then we also have Claire Abramson. Thank you again for joining us. As we work through this and as mentioned, we've got Mark Ritzman, who's dialed in for a couple of minutes. The, I know Bonnie, you had asked to, or you had mentioned it might be good in case members of the public have had questions. Doesn't look like technically, aside from Claire, we have members of the public present for this meeting, but while we have, while we have Mark here, is there any, any questions that any of the Claire or any of the trustees have?
First of all, I wanted to mention, I wanted to welcome Claire. Claire is a member of this committee at this point. Read to that. So she is, she is our sort of committee at our community at large. Member and Claire, thank you very much for agreeing to do this. I also wanted to clarify that although Claire is a an outstanding member of the Friends, she is actually going to be a community member versus a Friends representative. So you know, policy decisions, et cetera, et cetera, would be communicated to the Friends through our director. And Katie would be in a position as a community member. So she asked me to clarify that, but welcome Claire. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for inviting me. I'm not sure this is a committee you want to be on, but maybe you do. Some days you don't, right?
We appreciate your help.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, I was, I was speaking to Mark right before this meeting. He was asking if there have been any updates on the situation. And so just to let everyone know, to my knowledge, there have not been any significant changes or questions or anything like that from the public since our last meeting, which I think was October 24th. If I'm remembering correctly, so the only, the only changes that I particularly have to report are entirely staff investigating some of the, some of the things that we've taken that we wanted to take a look at. So, but yeah, other than that, we have not had any significant developments.
Katie, are you aware of any increased or decreased conversation on social media?
It's, as far as I know, there haven't been any, there hasn't been any activity on social media really since that last meeting. Aside from maybe a couple of comments or questions from the public, you know, have there been, you know, asking people in the post, have there been any updates? But other than that, nothing.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, well, I was gonna say if anyone, I want to be respectful of Mark's time. If there are any, any last minute questions that you might have for him. If you think of something after this meeting, let me know and I'm happy to, to pass that on as well.
The only thing that I, I was struck by, and this isn't really, well, I guess I could formulate a question out of this. I believe Katie, you were the one who sent the, the article from Chicago Public Library System where viewing pornography had been challenged and
Claire had sent that originally.
Claire, that was you who sent that. I, I found that really interesting. And was curious as to, I, I, I think, Mark, we have the ability to set whatever policy we have, we, we choose to. We do not have to abide by the, the freedom of expression and all of that. Is that correct? You're muted.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you know, you, you are free to set your policy and make it as restrictive as you like. The danger in making things restrictive is the challenges that come with that. I don't know this, this article that you're referring to. I'd be happy to read it. I'd love to read it.
Yeah, actually, I'll, I'll forward it to you after the meeting.
Guys, and it'll, it'll rear its head again for me. I'm sure in my practice, I'd love to read the article. I have not yet, but yeah, I mean, that's the, you know, we were talking about before, we could go ahead and, and put in filters in place, even though we're not required to by SIFUP because we're not receiving those funds that treated the requirement. The problem is, is basically over restriction. But we, you know, we can, we can do what we want. There's the safest course of action and there's the, I'm willing to be a test case course of action. And there's a lot in between.
Yeah, the, just to give a brief overview, the, the article that we were mentioning was from a couple of years ago, I think 2019 maybe. And it was written, it was Tribune or, yeah, I think it was the Tribune, talking about the Chicago Public Library System. And the headline was, yes, there's porn in the libraries and no, there's not a lot the librarians can do about it. And the, they talked about filters and exactly what kind of problems libraries run into with filters like we've discussed before. But they also talked about how in the Chicago Public Library Systems that they, if they, if they see someone viewing porn on one of the public computers, they typically don't ask them to say, hey, you need to, you need to turn that off unless it's, unless there's someone else who's there who is made uncomfortable by it. And then they may ask them to relocate to a different computer or something like that. I know that there are, that there are libraries that in general, just they, and they err on the side of we're not restricting anything, including pornography. And I know that, like you said, there's a big spectrum, but it was looking at, yeah, the Chicago Public Library was like, you know, that it's protected under the First Amendment. And so they, they, that's how they, they've set their, their policy. Which I think probably says, I think has probably has something to do with the large, you know, the, the stark difference in, in community than the large community that they serve. And, you know, for, for me personally, that's not particularly a road I want to go down in terms of saying, well, there's nothing we can do about it. But it was an interesting look at, you know, it's like what people think is this should be, you know, like an arrestable offense or something like that. It's like, it's not. And no, there's not really a whole lot. The, basically all of the libraries and librarians don't have a whole lot of good options. So it was an insightful article.
I, I think that's a good takeaway. There's, there's, we're choosing between least bad options. There's not a lot of good options. It's just bad. You know, because there's, and again, the safest course of action is, sounds like what they, what they decided to do there was do nothing. You know, I mean, or do the best they can and say, look, you're in a, you're in an area where the people can see this. Let's move you to your computer. Keep doing what you're doing. Let's just try and put you somewhere a little more private, which I guess in theory could lead to its own problems.
Yeah.
On the library, but yeah. You know, again, it's, it's, that's, it sounds like the least, that, that sounds like the option they took that was the most likely to keep them from getting sued. That's a weird way to say that, but again, the least bad option or the most likely option to keep them out of court. Was just, anything goes. We really don't have anything we can do about this. You know, we can, we can decide we want to have a little bit, you know, take more of a stance if we want to just be prepared for what could come with that. But you know, we can do that.
In fact, Katie, I'm, I'm happy to share with the committee some of the policies that I've collected, you know, Matt and I divvied up a number of area libraries to review their general conduct, computer use, wifi use, internet use. So I have those teed up to show to the committee tonight. The ones, you know.
Yeah, yeah, that'll definitely be, be good to look at. And I think, yeah, taking a look at what the other area libraries, what kind of what their baseline is will give us a good idea of which, you know, if are we leaning too far in one direction or the other, are we, are we kind of, you know, hitting that generally agreed upon sweet spot, so to say, or so to speak.
You know, if I could, if I could jump in real quick, sure. One of the things you're going to see a lot in those policies, and it's totally permissible, is to say, you can't view obscene material, you can't view pornography, you know. Where that, you know, whether that's even saying you can't do pornography is permissible or not. You know, you can, I don't know that the how enforceable that would be, but I do know you could say you can't view obscene material. One of the hard things about that, you can't view obscene material, which is often synonymous with pornography, is defining what is obscene. Again, you go back to that whole concept of one person's obscene is another person's art. And in that realm, one thing that I know you can always put in and you're gonna be okay. You can always say no viewing child pornography. It's never gonna be law. But when you get into pornography generally, the definition is what, you know, I don't even say no pornography, can say no viewing anything obscene. But again, that's an enforcement problem. It's not a policy problem.
Yeah.
That takes me to a question. I know one thing we mentioned last time, because I wrote up the minutes, so I, I remember this is another, I, I, once again, I don't know if it, was you Claire or if it was someone else who was in on the meeting from the public said that we could put signs right above the.
That was Laura Peets.
Was that Laura Peets?
Yeah.
Who's that would say, you know, viewing restricted materials is punishable by law or, or something to that effect. I don't have the exact words in front of me, but I, I, I'm not sure that we can legally say that. I mean, I'm not sure it is punishable by law.
I think that viewing child pornography is, I don't know how.
Yeah.
Okay, that's ripe for problems for us for like, let's say we decided after the fact that we're gonna call the police and say, hey, this guy was viewing child pornography. Are there issues there related to like library records confidentiality? If they say, okay, turn over his, turn over the, the access to all the sites you view, presuming we can even do that. But we got a problem there with, with breaching other acts now. You know, I mean, I don't want to get into saying like, well, one law is more important than another kind of way to do that, but we have different, we have different problems there with doing that. But I can, I can't comfortably say that viewing child pornography, A, it's not okay, B, it is crime.
Okay.
And I was gonna say, our policy does specifically mention that as, as an exception to, I think, to the patron privacy that, that if, if that were the case, the library would be complying with law enforcement. If someone were, were seen using library resources to access that type of information.
So we could certainly put up signs saying that viewing, I, I, I'm not quite sure what we would say, viewing restricted materials. And I would, I don't know if we want to get into, you know, violence or any of that other stuff. I mean, we may be opening a real Pandora's box here.
Yeah.
But, you know, viewing objectional materials is against library policy. And you will be asked, if you found doing so, you'll be asked to leave. Well, I, I just, I just don't know that, that I think is, is one of the things that we want to have as a takeaway from this committee is how we're going to, how we're going to communicate this to the public. And, and, and warn people that they better.
One of the hardest things about doing pornography and or objectionable materials and violence for that matter is you're, you're punting on one. If you want to write really strong policy or in or vague policy that says you can't view objectionable material. That's fine. You can write that policy. The problem then becomes an enforcement problem for the person who has to enforce it and or the challenge to that enforcement. You know, there's no, it says, you know, I mean, who's to say what's objectionable? Who's, it's, you know, again, tying back to the whole pornography thing. And I know that I have to look at that case of the Supreme Court, but I know that part of the definition had to do with, you know, what's, what's even obscene and or not, they're not probably obscene. What's obscene in one community may not be in another. So if you kind of generalize, which is always dangerous, but you want to generalize communities and say, okay, we'll take that. You know, traditionally conservative religious community, it's a rural community somewhere in the US versus the inner city of Chicago, you're gonna have two different standards probably of what's obscene in those two communities. And so maybe, maybe the answer is, again, I have to really look over that case. Well, what's, what would be permissible to restrict in the, in one community based on the kind of communities, I don't know, beliefs and or, you know, kind of a reasonable person, not the right word, but kind of the beliefs in that community and traditional values, not just traditional values in that community are different than the values in our community. So one, basically one community may be treated differently than another based on the makeup of that community. And kind of an unwritten social agreement as to what constitutes obscene. But again, you know, saying, yes, objection. And I think it's a good idea for clarity to say, no viewing objectionable material. No viewing illegal material. That, and I say that I like that simply because it has a deterrent effect for a fair amount of people.
That's what we're looking to do, I think.
Yeah. So I mean, there's, there's, even when you know you write, I, I don't, I don't advocate for writing policies that no we can enforce. You know, but there is, there is value in deterrence. And that sounds, that's one of the big things we're trying to adhere is deter future behavior and saying, look, you know, saying no objectionable material may be viewed. No obscene material may be viewed. That's fine. And hopefully that has the effect we're looking for. It's the tough cases that put us in a position to enforce that, that make them the tough cases. Because now we put that to test. Now we try to define saying what's obscene, what's objectionable. Again, I, I would, you said, Mark, writing a policy contract, I would include that stuff. And doing so, I mean, admittedly, that kind of punting to the enforcer and in some respects, hoping that most people that read that policy will go, yeah, probably shouldn't look at that stuff here.
And that's our goal.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Janie, some of the policies do specifically then spell out the consequences of violating the policy. Computer use, wifi, internet, et cetera.
Yeah. And I think that's all issue.
What were you saying, Kathy?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say along with the, and I think where Ms. Peace came up the last time, the signage, not just the expectation, but the consequence should be clearly stated in signage. Which I think is a very good recommendation.
And in doing that, just a quick question, you know, saying the consequences, is it like first offense is, are there, are there levels to the offenses? Like say, one thing is, I don't know. Looking at a gambling site is, you know, it's a first offense regardless of, of what it is. But let's say the, the type of offense, you know, you're viewing really obscene pornography versus viewing a gambling site. Let's say both are prohibited and say, well, either way, it's the first offense. So you get a week out of the library. Or is it, is there any discretion, I guess, in the nature of the actual offense? Or is it just a one, two, three strikes, you're out kind of thing? And I'm, and I'm not saying you should or shouldn't do one or the other. Just food for thought.
So one of the library policies that I reviewed says the, these are the different consequences and they are increasing severity, but it also said, but we reserve the right to jump. We don't have to go, you don't have, it doesn't mean your first offense is asked to leave. That the, the library, I forget if it was the board or staff have reserved the right to administer whatever they felt was the best consequence, the most appropriate consequence.
Yeah, I've, I've seen it in other policies where there are like consequences for, you know, failure to abide by this policy may, may result in being asked to end your computer session, being asked to leave the library or further suspension of library privileges or something like that. So it spells out what could happen without locking you into, well, this is exactly what's, yeah, which I was gonna say, I think Martha, was it Martha? It was probably Martha. Who said that our previous policies, especially for computer use, very, very specifically laid out what the consequences were. But it also gave people kind of like, not, I, yeah, I guess a loophole where they'd be like, oh, okay, well, you know, okay, after, if I'm banned for a week on eight, day eight, I'm gonna come back in and do the same thing. Cause I didn't like, I can't, I don't know exactly what it said, but they were able to find a way around what the library had written out in its policy because they had laid it out so specifically. So that when they rewrote the policy, I don't know, maybe four or five years ago, they've decided to go with a more flexible approach. Because that, that gave them the freedom to, to take each situation as they came across it.
That makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I would, would advocate for doing, coming from the side of, well, A, being the interim director, but also B, possibly being a staff member who has to enforce that type of thing. It's, I think, and I think it's one thing to like, you know, staff may have like, okay, this is typically how this goes. Like, okay, this is, you know, how, this is generally the formula we're going to follow. But, you know, in terms of what's officially laid out, giving it flexibility. I think it is the, is probably the best way to approach it.
Hey Katie, I know, I know you said you have a hard stop at six. Did you want to look at the reconfiguration alternatives that you sent us or?
Yeah, um, well, I was gonna say, let's, let's, I was gonna say, let's wrap up the section with Mark so that, so that he doesn't have, have to sit through the entire meeting. So any, any other last minute thoughts or questions that you wanted to throw to Mark? Okay. And like I said, if you, if you do think of something, let me know. Mark, thank you so much. Once again, for dropping in. We really appreciate all of the guidance you've been able to give us up to this point. And yeah, hopefully, we won't, we won't have to contact you quite as much.
Yeah, I'm happy to help you guys. It's, it's what I'm here for. And you know, when you have kind of a draft of policy or if you want to, you know, even, even whatever stage of the process you are, if you want me to look at, I'm happy to do that. So send it on by when you're ready for it and I'll provide my feedback.
Yeah, well, we'll for sure do that. So yeah, we'll, we'll definitely let you, let you know if anything comes up. But yeah, we really appreciate you've been a tremendous help to us so far. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah, thank you guys. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, you too. Bye bye. To answer your question, Bonnie, well, one thing that Kathy spoke to me a couple of days or last week about in terms of the reconfiguration of the space. I believe I had sent out, I had already sent out Anna's very detailed notes about, I think, three primary areas that she and Jillian had looked at as hypothetical possibilities for moving the computers and concluded that these are going to create more. If moving them, moving the location is going to create more problems than it's going to solve. And in many cases would probably, yeah, require major relocation of different shelving units. What may violate ADA guidelines, that type of thing. But Kathy spoke to me last week about the possibility of moving the computers into, back in where they were into basically now the newly remodeled Stro Room. So that was something that I spoke to staff about right away because I knew we had the meeting coming up. I was gonna say, Kathy, do you want to, do you want to bring that up to talk about that for this meeting? Or do you want to?
Yeah, I would. I can jump in here. But I don't want to, I know you've got, gotta watch your clock. Yeah, a couple of things. And thanks Katie for, and staff for the photographs. And I know I'm sure that took time to be creative and think and figure out and all the factors that you guys have to consider in moving furnitures. Pretty significant. So thanks for all that. Actually Jenny Grisiano and I were at the library last week and we walked up and looked at the Stro Room and thought, well, maybe this would be an interim solution because it was the, the home of the computers. I talked to Janie about it. She thought it was a good idea. It's just one of several variables that, that Katie and staff have come up with. But putting a table in there, we have the power if I, it's a possibility. I, I think strongly that getting those carols out of that location is absolutely essential. It is a visual reminder that something terrible happened there, something very unpleasant. Especially because of the involvement with children. I just think we need to get the imagery out of the library as soon as we possibly can. Even, you know, I know we were talking Katie about logistically, some of the spacing just doesn't work. I don't have, I don't see why we can't even have two locations. If, if logistically you can't put two tables next to one another. Leave one, there's no sides to it, no, no barring of any vision. Put another one somewhere else or one in the Stro Room is somewhere else. But I really hope though, and I appreciate all the work, is that at this point, we take these options and any other, first, we obviously share our thoughts. But let's put this, give this a billion grounds and get staff in there. Claire is welcome to join us to kind of walk through it. Sit there ourselves to take a look at and have a few people giving it some thought rather than trying to make a quick decision. But if we could put that kind of onsite discussion. I, I'd like to see that done. I mean, I'd like to see us kind of walk through these options. Another point that I will bring up is I have, and I could even get the, if you don't, I have an image from the space study that shows us the, a relocated circulation desk in front of the stair, in front of the, well, in front of the new signage that we have in the library. Which would free up, if, if you can, if you can visualize where the circulation desk is now. If that weren't out there, there would be three or four tables for public use, including computer use. It's in full view of the circulation desk. Circulation desk is then where the, kind of where the periodicals are. Giving a broader view of the first floor area. Now that obviously is not within our means to make those changes. But I think it's a reasonable goal for us to consider, again, talking through building grounds, talking to the board, talking to the foundation. The foundation is in need of a, of a goal, of a project, something to raise money for. That would complete the first floor planning that was part of the space study in 20, starting in 2015. So I'd like to just get that into the mix of conversation as long as we're talking about all of this. What I, what I want to stress is I really believe we need to make some changes as soon as possible to to really let the, the public know that we see the seriousness of this situation and we're not going to let it happen again. It might be interim. You know, we can live with interim and improve as time goes on. But I would very much be in favor of not having the status quo if it includes just that location and those particular tables.
Um, I was gonna say too, uh, cause we, like I said, Kathy, I talked to staff shortly after you and I spoke. I think, well, here's, I was gonna say, here's, here's the, the, one of the primary issues. There, well, there, there were a couple of concerns that, that staff had with moving the computers to the Stro Room. One of them was, I know we, we've talked about the use of the Stro Room as a multi-use space versus a, you know, a quiet reading room space, which I think is a, is a fair point to bring up for sure. The problem is that as soon as we move, even though, even if it is for an interim period, the, as soon as we move the computers into the room, that is what the room becomes. We are not able to potentially use the room for any kind of bookings, to use it for any kind of event. Because we would need to make sure the computers are available to, for the, for all of the hours that the library is open. And if we move the computers into the room, we also lose the capacity to even use the room as a quiet study room. Because our patrons frequently need assistance on the, on the computer. So that means staff are going to be going in and out of the room on a fairly frequent basis. And so basically the room becomes, you know, a newly renovated space to house one or two computers. Um, and so basically the room becomes, you know, a newly renovated space to house one or two computers. Um, but there isn't a consistent way for the public to be able to use the space other than as a computer room. Um, and, and we have, you know, we've gotten a lot of interest from the public. When is the room gonna be open? We're really excited about this. If they go in there to use it as a quiet room and then all of a sudden they've got, they've got people in there using the computer, uh, maybe do, taking a quiet phone call, asking staff for help and they all of a sudden can't use it as a quiet room. They're gonna go to staff and say, hey, you guys spent all this money on the room. Why aren't we able to use it? You know, for what we, for what we wanted or for what we said that the room was gonna be used for. And that I know is projecting a little bit, but I think the, um, the main concern, the main concern of it not, it basically being just a place to house, um, the public computers. Um, and not being able to use it for anything else. I think one is, is one that we have to, that we have to really look at. Um, it's just, it's not gonna be a quiet space and there's gonna, there's no way to like, oh, well, it's gonna be quiet from this time to this time. I mean, it depends on when people want to come in and use the room. Um, the other issue is, um, again, in terms of, we would need to make sure that, uh, putting the computers in there, we would, um, well, A, obviously ADA, um, uh, guidelines. But B, we also have a number of regular computer users, um, who use some version of mobility aid to use the computers right now. Like immediately when we were thinking about this, we could list off four or five people right away that we know regularly use the computers. And maybe have a cane, a walker, a wheelchair, a motorized, a motor, a motorized chair, um, something like that. And the, um, yeah, having that or making sure that we have the space to accommodate that in that small room with the furniture that we've, with the furniture that we've ordered, um, could, could be difficult. Um, the others, and a lot of these people are just people using the computer in general, often have another person with them to assist. Um, and so it's not just one person using the computer. We maybe have, you know, two people at a station. It does get, it does get crowded, but that is the nature of how a lot of our patrons use the public computers. So it's significant, these are, it's significant things we would definitely want to take into consideration.
Well, I still would like this to go to building and grounds and have us walk through the options.
I think, I know, I, I think, I think that's, that's fine. I'm, I'm just, um, raising the primary, the primary concerns from talking to staff, what we saw would be the issue. Or what, if we were to move the computers there, um, what the, what those issues would be. Um, in terms of replacing the carols with some other type of, you know, more open, like not having the sides up, um, to kind of create that barrier. I think that that is definitely doable. Um, we would obviously need to figure out budget and what kind of options we would have available. But I think that's definitely, that's definitely something that, that can be done. Um, the other option that I've mentioned before is potentially, we've, we have mentioned privacy screens. If we're looking for something fast that we can do right away, having the physical privacy screen, um, to, potentially eliminate a person's ability to see the screen as they're coming up from the stairs. Um, even though they are behind the computers, they, they would be at an angle. So it'd be much harder to see the, the, what the, the person's looking at on the screen. So I don't, I don't wanna forget about that option as well.
Well, Katie, you said the primary concern and I, um, you had a primary concern, which is important. My primary is concern is that we assure the public that this will never happen again. That no child will ever come up those stairs and view anything that, by any definition of his or her parents could be considered inappropriate. So that's my primary concern. Um, unfortunately, we've always had a library where space is a main issue. So, um, we can look at all of, you know, we probably all have a primary concern, but we have to think, why are we having this conversation? Why are we meeting? We're meeting because on October tenth, something really bad happened in our library. And we were not as cautious as we should have been in welcoming children to the library that day. And we can't let that happen again.
I, no, I, I under, I am, understand that. My, um, well, I guess, I guess, well, here's, here's a question then, um, when we talk about moving the computers to the, uh, let's, well, let's say we're looking long term. Um, and we're looking at moving the circulation desk to the middle of the main floor by the staircase and using that back wall as like a computer area. Um, granted, the computers are not right by the staircase, but there's, they would still be visible from the main floor where we have children walking back and forth. Um, the, I was gonna say, the, I mean, the, the potential issue is still, is still there for us. If, is still there that, you know, someone may have something on a screen that, that a child could see. And I'm not, and we do need to make, we do need to make changes. That's what, you know, we're talking, we're talking about the, these different options. It's, it's not going to be possible for us to eliminate any possibility that this could ever happen again.
I, I would agree with you. Uh, there's, there's always a slim chance, even if we move them. It, it's just, uh, moving them over to that wall where the circulation desk is now, makes them a lot more invisible to any, you know, and, and the people sitting there would have their backs to everybody else who's milling around the lobby and would, would.
Yeah, my, I mean, my hope is that the, know, you know, having their computer screen, knowing that other people can see it would be a deterrent that they would not feel like, oh, I have the privacy to, to look at something. I probably shouldn't be sup, I probably shouldn't, but it's, we're, what we're looking at are trade-offs. What are we willing to, you know, what, what trade-offs are we willing to make in order to lessen the chances that the, that this happens again? Um, so that's, you know, and as, as we've, you know, this, and ultimately this is, you know, whatever changes we make, um, is gonna have some kind of an impact on the staff's ability to do other library-related functions, providing assistance, um, you know, letting, you know, having people use the Stro Room for whatever purposes, you know, are available to them. So I, I don't want, I don't want this to come across as if I'm, I, I'm not throwing up my hands and saying, well, there's nothing we can do about it. But there, but these other factors, as, you know, that, these are, these are other factors that I do take into consideration and the staff take into consideration as well.
Claire, Bonnie, Rob, do you wanna give any, what went away in this?
Are we talking right now in the interim two computers? Or, cause that's like what I remember when I've been in the library and that, um, little corner there. Are there just two computers there right now?
Yes.
And that's what you're talking about relocating?
Yes.
Just two?
Mm-hmm.
And that's all the minimum of what you need, right?
Yes, um, we've, there, there has been discussion of, cause we do have the laptops that the, that the friends provided funds for. Um, what we have found is that, um, the laptop, you know, the laptops do get, do get some use. But a lot of our patrons who come in to use the public computers have flat out refused to use laptops. Um, and they will absolutely, like even if both desktop computers are in use, they will, they would rather wait for a desktop to become available than use a laptop and get done, get what they need done immediately. Um, so we, yeah, minimum of two desktop stations. Um, and I don't, I, I realize Claire, when I, uh, when I realized I hadn't included you in the initial email with the documents, I don't know, um, if, uh, the email that I sent to you, did it have any photos attached to it?
Yes, I saw them.
Okay, good, okay. I just, I, I realized when I was looking at something else and I was like, wait a minute, I don't know if the photo's attached.
No, I saw them. And at first I was trying to figure all that out with the, with the chair and the whole thing. So those chairs are the sizes of the chairs that are, that's, are in front of those computers now.
Yeah, those are the chairs. Yeah, yeah.
I think like Kathy said, an onsite walkthrough would be necessary because I'll have to live do this. You know, and have input, obviously from everyone. I don't know, uh, obviously that makes it very, much more confusing, but I think that that's important for sure. Um, because reading through this, I do agree that some of these, you know, pros and cons, of course, for each. But I agree that there's not just like this great answer, you know, doesn't seem possible when you think about it for some of these. You're like, oh, well, why can't you put it here? And that, you know, there's not a, a perfect answer.
No.
Um, and it's,
It's an appreciation, doesn't it, Claire? How, how tight things are there?
I know. And when I walk in, I mean, we know it's a small library, but I don't feel that way as a patron when I walk in.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I'm also not trying to reconfigure things, you know? I'm not thinking, I have my mission to go get a book or do this or do that, you know, and I'm not rethinking about it in that way. Um, have you thought about splitting them up? You know, doing one computer, one place and one, I know that's in, like weird, but it's also an interim.
Yeah. Um, I don't know, um, yeah, I, um, I would, I would have to talk to, um, Anna and Jillian. Um, cause they, they did a lot of, a lot of this independently and then reported back. Um, I think for, for some of the areas that they looked at, I think a lot of the problems would, um, we would still be running into them, whether it's one computer or two. I know for one, for, uh, the, um, where the catalog computer is on the main floor, that right there is, it's a one. Uh, you know, it's basically space for one computer. If we wanted to do two, we would have to like really move some shelving. Um, but yeah, even for a, for a computer station where someone is going to be there for, um, you know, where someone is gonna be there for longer than, you know, a couple of minutes looking something up on the catalog. Um, that, yeah, that creates more traffic issues than there would still be some shelf reconfiguration. Maybe not quite as much with two, but there would still be some required. So I think that's, um, I, I think, yeah, splitting them up, we might, we might be able to find like, okay, we can maybe possibly one to one in there. Um, or in, into a, a, a particular spot. Um, I think a lot of the same issues are gonna, are gonna come up. But I agree that, um, a walkthrough would be, would be helpful.
The only option I thought was the best, and just kind of reading through this pretty quickly, was the one with the, both computers facing the DVDs. Or not, well, the DVDs on the window side, not the wall. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I guess, I don't know what your goal is though. Is it to enforce? So you're like actually at the desk seeing what people are sort of kind of looking at to kind of observe that? Or do you want them to be facing away from patrons? I mean, that's what's hard is, cause then you don't know what they're looking at.
Mm-hmm.
You can't enforce anything if they're facing, you know?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's definitely a, um, and it's in, it's, it's definitely a concern. And I know at my, at my last library at Waukegan, we had twenty-eight public computers and they were all on long tables, basically back to back with each other. So, you know, some of the computers we could see from the desk, but others we couldn't. Um, it was kind of a moot point, cause we also had a safety team that would regularly patrol the area to keep an eye on, make sure that, you know, make sure no one was looking at, uh, anything that violated policy. But, um, but yeah, there's, yeah, it comes down, it comes down to there, there's no specific, or there, there, there's no great option.
I think Claire raised a good point. What's our, what's our goal here? And I, I, I feel firmly, feel very strongly that a, a goal has to be that we have some, um, ability to know what's going on on those computers, not, not shoulder, shoulder or anything like that. And basically this is not a, fortunately, a, a frequent problem that we have. But, um, having, having eyesight of staff on computers, I think minimizes anyone doing things that they shouldn't be doing probably, at least cuts it down. And it assures, most importantly, ensures the public that we are doing the best we can.
Yeah.
You know, there is even, uh, it's come to my attention since October tenth, there's even some urban legend about misuse of those computers. So, um, you know, it has been talked up quite a bit. And I think making the clear that the library, you know, what's our goal? Our goal is to protect people. So we're doing the best we can, providing space, privacy for users, but at the same time, being aware that, you know, our, our computers are not being used in objectionable fashion. And you can only do that if you can at least have some vision on it. So, um, but it's tough.
I'll, I'll just add a few quick comments. I, 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 again, preliminarily, um, A, I think we should go into the library and make this decision as opposed to doing it online. Two of the choices listed, the one I think has the most promise is over by those DVDs. Cause you can potentially situate the computers in such a way that, um, they're not in the highest traffic area in and around the circulation desk. And so long as staff can get around, um, you know, people just walking through may not have to see the, the computer itself, depending upon how they're oriented. Um, I like the idea of it being open, none of these sides, the carols and even just a little more. Cause I, I've sat in those carols to sign checks. It's very tight.
Yeah.
No matter what. So, I mean, they're, just, it, they're, they're, the, where, where they are now, obviously, um, created a problem. So let's address it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do think it's, it's good to, wherever they're moved, it is showing that we move them, that we're doing something about it. I think that's really the main point at this time. And we can move them again, you know, like, I mean, it's an interim thing, but I think that if we move them, it shows that we're trying. And doing what's best for everybody. Cause if you don't move them, then it looks like we just like completely ignored the problem.
Okay, um, well, it sounds like the next step is going to be, um, so it sounds like we wanna get a building and grounds meeting, uh, on the book so that we can do, so that we can do a walkthrough. Um, I, uh, Kathy, I, I know we've got, but with the, with the holidays coming up and whatnot, that's gonna throw a,
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, what, what was that? Your computer cut out for us, for a second?
Two computers and I talked into the one that's not working, sorry. Um, no, I, it's definitely tough. I was kind of, in, in my head, I was thinking if we could look to December, which is even limited space in December in terms of timing and, and, um, do a couple of things, have a building and grounds committee, have a consensus. And then also I know Bonnie has things to talk about. And I thought if we could get a small tech group together to, to go over that as well in December. And hopefully have final recommendations in the first or second week of, uh, January. That might be, I mean, that works with the holidays. It's a little, I think zealous of just to say, oh, let's just wrap this up in the next few weeks because too many people come and go and kind of stuff.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, any furniture moving, we've got mini golf coming up at the beginning of December, so.
Forgot about that as well, yeah. Um, but, uh, how does that sound to everybody else? If we set a goal for meetings in December, that, that meet everybody, the best we can do is schedules. And have some recommendations in early January.
I, I'm gonna be out of town from end of December through about January tenth. Just saying, I don't have to be there, but will not be available.
No problem. January tenth is still early January. We can put that together. It's good to know. Um,
Can, can I request that we get our building and grounds meeting scheduled maybe for this week?
Um, well, I was, I was gonna say, I, I know, well, I know we've got tomorrow's meeting as well. We've got our staff in service coming up on Friday. Um, and so we've got a, I was, we potentially, I would, I, for me, I would say it, it depends on what, um, it would have to be, I, I think it would have to, it would actually have to be Thursday. Cause with the Open Meetings Act as well, we have to have the forty-eight hours. Um, we have to have the forty-eight hours notice.
Right.
Um, so yeah, it would, it would have to, it would have to be Thursday to do that. Um, if we're able, I was gonna say, if we're able to, I can, I can try to squeak, I can try to elbow some time. Which try to shuffle some stuff around, but.
Uh, what is Claire's schedule? Are you available evenings only or what's a good, what?
Oh, Thursdays are actually good for me, cause I usually do work on Mondays and Thursdays. Um, I think I can do a Thursday morning. Let me, let me run into my calendar.
So Thursday, we're looking at the, seven.
I can do Thursday anytime before about twelve thirty. This Thursday, the seventeenth, anytime before twelve thirty. This Thursday, the seventeenth, anytime before twelve thirty.
So if you can make that happen, great.
I'm moving on a Thursday morning.
So am I.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think I can, um, I've got desk coverage, but I think I can get, um, we, I should be able to get one, one of our staff members to, to cover that for as, for as long as the meeting is. Do, what tie, um, Kath, oh, I'm sorry, Kathy, are you, what's your schedule for Thursday?
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, good grief. I am free Thursday morning until one.
Okay, do we wanna do maybe, um, do we wanna do ten thirty, eleven?
Any of those times.
Okay, we'll do ten thirty. Yeah, ten thirty, Thursday, building grounds. Um, okay, so I will, um, I will get that, uh, posted tomorrow morning and send that out.
Great. Yeah, I think that's probably better to do it sooner than later.
Yeah, I agree.
Cause otherwise we wait and it just keeps getting pushed and pushed and pushed and pushed.
Especially with holidays coming up, yeah.
Uh, and Bonnie, would you like to, if we could then, if we have we could maybe set ten thirty, you know, um, if we finish up reasonably, we could sit down and talk about pop, the policy work you've done up to this point.
Perfect.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So let's say we'll meet roughly ten thirty to twelve, does that, is that all right?
Um, yeah, I think, I think we can do, I can make that.
Okay.
Great.
Um, also, I, I was gonna say, I just, I just realized, um, from talking to Mark and everything, we never, uh, went ahead and approved the minutes from last time. And I also realized that, um,
It's six oh three, we can do it next time, Katie, if you
That's, okay, that's fine. And we also, um, since this is kind of a flexible committee, we still also have the meeting, the minutes from the August tenth request for reconsideration meeting that technically need to be approved as well, so. We, if we wanna just do a, do a batch,
Yeah.
Do a batch for, for next time, the special topics committee meeting, uh, meets, that's, that's fine. I just didn't want, want the meeting to go by and then go, oh, shoot. All right.
Okay, so I, do we have marching orders here? Uh, can we do a motion to adjourn, so you can get on your merry way, Katie?
Yeah, I was gonna say, grab a quick dinner, get in, log on to the village meeting, it's for tonight. Yeah, um, and I was gonna say, uh, Bettina's gonna be at tomorrow's board meeting to talk about this meeting as well, so, um, I my, my, I'm just there, I think, in an informational capacity. I don't need to do too much, it's just seeing, seeing what's what. Okay, so yeah, with that, um, I guess I, um, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn. Um, I heard Janie first.
Oh, okay, then I second.
All right, uh, meeting is adjourned at six oh four, and we'll see everyone later.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Claire, thanks a lot for being with us.